All right. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this very important public forum. I appreciate everyone being here, the candidates and the audience. Just in case folks are wondering, this is a similar format that we've done in the past. We are recording this forum, which will give a chance for members of the school board nominating committee to review the forum. We also will be posting clips online. We're joined by a couple of members of the media who are here as well to share this with the broader community. And I want to thank you all for taking time out of your evening. We are going to be splitting tonight's forum into two pieces based upon geographic districts. Some of you may know, due to a charter change, we've changed the way we do school boards now. And so we have a half-elected, half-appointed. But the appointed members are also appointed by region. So in order to make this a little bit easier for the audience to follow and a chance for the participants to share their thoughts and be a little bit less rushed. If you were here a year ago, there was a ton of interest and honestly, there were too many people on stage and it was hard to follow. So tonight, we're splitting into two pieces, starting with regions one and two, which is wards one, two, and three, and wards four, five, and 14. The way the appointments will work is... The way the appointments will work, similar to in the past, and this is established by city charter, there's a school board nominating committee. Two of the three members are here tonight. The third member will review the forum on tape. I want to thank Camila Benitez and Tom Carvander Slice for their service. And then they will make recommendations by region to me. And then those appointments will have a chance to interview those folks, and then I will then submit a recommended nominee to the city council. Providence City Council will entertain those nominations in January, and we hope to have them confirmed as soon as possible. They will join the five elected school board members, and then those 10 members make up our new school board. This is an exciting time and a time of very serious work for our school board. And so I want to thank each and every one of you for your offer to serve. We expect over the length of these new terms that the schools will transition back to Providence's local control. And so you will be in the seat that matters when the school board takes the schools back. And so we're taking this process very seriously because this is about to be very serious time. I want to acknowledge in the room Cory Jones, who's one of our newly elected school board members. Congratulations, school board member Jones. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. And we're going to hear from the city council here in just a minute. After that, I will turn it over to the League of Women Voters, who is going to do what they have done for a very long time, which is help inform and with fairness and sometimes strict timekeeping, keep us moving along. And so having been onstage for forums moderated by the League of Women Voters in the past, I can tell you those paddles mean something, so please respect them. And we're really grateful. These are volunteers in our community that care about civic engagement and care about an informed electorate. And they're fulfilling their responsibilities as members of League of Women Voters to do that for us tonight. They have done this many times before. And so for the numerous times that they've done this, thank you very much. Give a round of applause to League of Women Voters. And now I would like to introduce the president pro tem of the Providence City Council. Councilman Juan Pacheco will say a few words on behalf of the council. And then to the League of Women Voters, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and good evening applicants and public servant to all of you. And it is a good night for all of us because we continue to move forward in getting us organized and getting us to the new year, especially the community and all of you for coming out in full force as they're coming in tonight to hear from these potential appointees to the school board. I also want to thank the mayor. The mayor has been a steadfast mayor who's been having community dialogues in the community, in the city of Providence, and will continue to do so. And also to the school board nominating commission of your public servants, volunteer, for reviewing the candidates and hosting this forum so we can all be as informed as possible. The Providence students have made it clear, our business people, our parents, us as a city council have made it clear that we need to continue to stand up and do the right thing and move our education forward. Over the past few months, my colleagues, President Miller and the city council, and I have been listening intently to schools, leaders, teachers, and families, business people, and most importantly, our students. Visited student groups and individuals just last week. City council has joined student activists in our Providence Schools PVD to hear their priorities and their concerns. The message to us is urgent. It's urgent to the students, it's urgent for our communities, and they deserve accountability. Adequate resources and a true vote in shaping decisions that directly impact them. And I'm proud to chair the council special committee on health, opportunity, prosperity, and education. And as we focus on education, we will continue to work with our mayor, with the Providence School, and our government leaders, and parents, and students to hear their concerns and to chart a path forward. Our new hybrid board has a unique opportunity to help bring forth a transformative change that our students are calling for, our parents are calling for. I want to congratulate the five newly elected members who just joined the Providence Public School Board. We are very grateful for your commitment in improving our outcomes, and we look forward to working with you. It is my hope that the appointed members can build the momentum as we work together to find solutions, bring vision and determination to guide the critical turnaround and ensure a successful lasting return to local schools, local control. Tonight, the potential appointees will have an opportunity to show their intent, to address the challenges, to improve the lives of our students, and also show us or tell us how they're also going to be working with us in the city government, mayor, city council, and those elected officials, with the goal of changing our system to ensure that our schools and our students are successful. The path ahead won't be easy, but with a school board packed with compassionate, committed leaders, the direction forward becomes a bit clearer. So we owe it to our students, our parents, and to our city in the future to rise to this moment in the manner of brighter future for Providence Public Schools. We can make this happen. We can't settle anything, we can't settle for anything less. So along with our mayor and the entire city council, we look forward to engaging you. And the next step, once the commission and the mayor makes their recommendation, they come before us, the final ones. And your voice is so important because even at that stage, we would like to hear you, and we invite you to our third floor in the city hall, the city council chamber. Thank you, and have a good night, and if I will see you all, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Pacheco. Just a couple more housekeeping items. As you can tell, there's some name cards of some folks who have applied who are not yet here. We will allow them to take the stage, but we will not go backwards in the questions if they arrive during the forum. Similarly, because we have broken this into two pieces, the timeline for tonight is 5:00 to 6:30 for group one and 6:30 to 8:00 for group two. And if it wraps up a little faster based upon the number of people participating, that's fine as well. But we've given folks notice about a 6:30 start for the second group, and then we'll conclude when that second group concludes and allow everyone to then move on with their night. And I know it's a busy time during the holidays. So at this point, we'll get started. I'm going to introduce Joan Redsinus from the League of Women Voters to get us started, go through the format for the evening, and then actually start with questions. Joan?
Great, thank you. Thank you. The League of Women Voters is thrilled and honored to be part of this process for something like the 20th year. No surprise, the League is keen to have uneducated citizens for a robust democracy. So we are grateful to Mayor Smiley for reaching out to the public who have such a stake in public education. A few details. Martha Fruchy and Helen Walsh, you in the center have time cards. You will each have a minute for a question, which is pretty short, so I urge you not to waste it. We will end you at a... So please show your time cards, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. Also, we have all your bios online, so you don't need to totally reintroduce yourselves or really waste your time saying how much you love children. So please, let's start. Question number one. What motivates you to serve on the Providence School Board? What spills and/or experiences have prepared you to pursue this work or work to address these issues in this role? One minute, we'll start with Mr. Holt, and then we will just keep going down. So, Mr. Holt?
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I'm Ryan Holt. And what motivates me to pursue a position on the school board, a number of things. You know, one, I'm a proud graduate of Classical High School. And I want to see all of our schools do better. This is a critical time in the school system as we get to the point where, at some point, we are going to be transitioning from state control. So a good school district is the difference between whether or not people live in this city or businesses move to this city. And my skills as an attorney, as well as a government employee, a mayor's chief of staff, will allow me to provide oversight, perspective, and basically a good job for our students and teachers and parents.
I'm motivated because my children really had a transformative experience going to Providence Public Schools. And I was involved with the schools, starting in around 2004, where I worked at, I worked in the schools, I did the senior for the annual re-ment school. I did that for about 10 years with Jane Kenner. And then I moved on to the Nathan Bishop, and I worked with Glenn Zinnowitz. So I've been around a while, and so I've met a lot of wonderful teachers. And I believe my skills, well, I just finished my Juris Doctor, Roger Williams, so I have, I can... Oh, my mom, okay, okay.
No. I have these.
Oh, okay, okay. You know my glasses, I need my glasses. Okay, so I believe I can be useful in terms of legal interpretation and being able to read policy. I also have a degree in architecture from RISD, which I think will be useful for evaluating plans.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Hughes. I am a current member on the Providence School Board. My main motivation is that I'm the parent of two current students in Providence Schools, an 11th grader and a 9th grader. I believe that my experience in this one short year that I've served so far positions me well to help us through this next transition period. This year, I was elected by my fellow board members to serve as secretary of the board. I also was named policy committee chairperson. Recently, I also served as a designee on the school board, for the school board on the collaboration group working towards transition back to local control. I think that the most important thing that we need as we move forward is a mix of fresh ideas and experience, and I believe that I can bring that experience here. Thank you.
My name is Angel Newman. And what motivates me to be on the Providence School Board is, one, I'm also on the school board already, and so getting a firsthand experience working with folks who believe in education and young people as much as I do was refreshing. And it's one thing to actually care, but it's another to roll your sleeves up and actually do it. I'm motivated because if people didn't invest in me as a young person, I grew up going to a local after-school program, an art school program, AS220, and it was the adults who cared enough to roll their sleeves up, do the hard work, do the policy change, have a vision. That's why I am where I am now as a co-executive director of that same organization. And as a mother of five, two of which are in Providence Public Schools right now, I not only want Providence Public Schools to be good for them, but I want them to be for all of the 500 young people that I serve at AS220 every day.
Thank you.
My name is Herman Brewster. I had a son who went to Classical and walked out after a few weeks, another son who managed to graduate from Classical. The son who walked out ended up at ALP, which turned out to be a wonderful, wonderful experience. I was a counselor at prison, and I reached the point where I needed to change, and I got a degree at Brown in teaching. And when I realized we had fallen behind from where we were when I was teaching in the 90s, I felt that I just had to participate in change, in improvement, and make this a place where everyone has an opportunity to excel.
My name is Tony Aiken. What motivates me is my continued work in the education management field for the past 18 years. I've worked with students from all around the globe, and the most motivating factor is students here in Providence, Rhode Island. They very much like myself in terms of their grit to continue with their education and with their passion to get the best education path that they can get in here in Providence. So I think that's what's continuing to motivate me. So I think additionally, I think that my continued work on the school board would be an asset as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tony Donahue. What motivates me? To be honest, the funding fight that we just went through with the state is what brought me here. I've worked in public finance for the last nearly eight years. I worked for the House Finance Committee writing the final budget that comes along the state. I'm familiar with policy analysis, I'm familiar with writing law that gets to what you wanted to get to. And I'm very familiar with, I believe in the idea that money is policy, right? The things that we fund are the things that we do, it's a mechanism for change. I bring a lot of skills from doing that work. Thank you very much. Also, I have a couple of kids who are in Providence Schools now. I have another graduated, and I myself dropped out of Providence Public Schools, which I think gives me a little bit different perspective to most people. In fact, from ALP, which is a fantastic school and wasn't their fault, I just, I really wanted to come back and try to get back to the city and the state. I'm here on purpose, and I want to do my good, especially the kids here. They have a lot of great youth organizations, they do a lot of great work, they need some support, and I know that adults are always making the best choices.
Good evening. My name is Jamil Clark. What motivates me to work for the school board is as the alumnus of Fox Point Elementary School, the gifted program of Nathaniel Green Middle School, Classical High School, and even Northwestern University in Evansville, Illinois. I have come to appreciate, understand, and fully celebrate the importance of a quality education. I believe that in addition to our new schools and school programs like PCTA, a rise in standard for schools and education in the city is important and vital to the future of the city. In addition to our teacher pay and school student programs, I think that our local control for Providence Schools is vital for the city of Providence, with the caveat that state funding does provide additional funding, which the city alone might not be able to fully appreciate without the state contribution. I am humbled and excited by the prospect of working for the city in its capacity and with the improvements and progress that Providence has once again already begun to make. I am energized by the prospect of a better Providence for our schools and for the city at large.
Thank you. Okay. Question two. Question two, we'll start with Ms. Newman, so that there's some shaking up of people. How may the school board serve and be most impactful or helpful in this time before the district returns from state to municipal control?
Thank you for that question. I think school board members, and I definitely experienced this in the past year, we have this unique positionality on the school board to be in between worlds. So, right, we're not like in the city government necessarily, we're not in the district, we all come from different places, different organizations, and we're actually able, we have this magic power, which I think is to be able to like hear the needs of different stakeholders, students, families, city, RIDE, the state, and we're able to help translate, we're able to help bridge communication, build relationships, and be able to take feedback that comes from community and bring it to folks who may not have that same access or that same ear, and then also, in the same way, take what we're hearing about policy, regulation, the future, the vision that maybe RIDE has and that the city and the district has that may not be translating, but is actually really powerful, and we can bring that back to community. So I think right now, our mission and goal should be to build really good relationships that will continue this work moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Brewster.
As a private citizen, I don't have access, let's say, to schools. As a school board member, I believe I can visit schools, I can meet students, I can talk to principals, I can get a sense of what is actually taking place. Outside of that, as of, you know, the situation I'm in now, it's very frustrating because I have no idea what is actually taking place in our schools. And I think that's important. It's important to hear from all the people who have a stake in our schools, and that includes principals, the janitors, the teachers. And so that's why I have chose to do this.
Thank you. Yes? We're continuing with Ms. Aiken.
Thank you. As an active member of your committees, I have a very good finger on the pulse of working with the state organizations, RIDE, with the principals, with the students, and I feel that would bridge forward with the new hybrid school board model as well, particularly with being an active member on the Return to Local Control Commission and having a great understanding of the key metrics and how to actually put them into place, and the blueprints are already developed and shepherding them into action. Thank you.
So the board is essentially a select body. It's here to do oversight, it's here to hold the school administration accountable. One of the things we often see is that there's often a plan in place, but sometimes people get out over their skis, they have a great new idea, and they're not following through with the plan that we agreed to. We should be here, listening to teachers, listening to students, listening to the administration, but holding everybody accountable for what the plans are, sticking to the plan, and being proactive between both, between the public and the government.
Good evening, this is Jamil Har Clark once again. I think that the best way that the school board and the Providence Public School District at large can benefit from a continuation of state funding under Providence auspices, of course, for the school board and the Providence Public School District, is to continue our new building projects and renovations at the pre-existing big four Providence Public High Schools, by which I mean especially Classical High School, Mount Pleasant High School, Hope High School, which is a magnet school, which is a wonderful program for the city and for the school board and the school district to support, and Hope Central High School as well. In addition to renovations and building expansion and maintenance, I believe that attention paid to the curriculum and an updating for it in light of the expanding consciousness that students have of the world around them and the needs of the 21st century society to continue educating their students, I think that's how it could best be used. Thank you very much.
Mr. Holt?
We've got to get the school district ready to walk through that door when that door opens, and hopefully that door opens sooner rather than later. And to do that, we have to have and interact, we need to be able to interact with RIDE, which I do from time to time in my current capacity as chief of staff, the mayor, Pawtucket. But we also have to work with the teachers, the parents, and the students to hear their voices, to, as we create those policies, procedures, to get the school district ready to go. The other thing that we have to do is be advocates for the good things that are happening in the schools right now. We need people who are out there talking to the media, talking to the people, saying, promoting the good things about the district, because I know a lot of times that's not done enough, and it needs to be done more. We need to have people be able to buy into what's going on in this district, for all of us to come together as one city to improve the schools and create the best school district in the state and hopefully at some point in the country. Thank you.
Ms. Murnov?
Okay, well, you know, this whole thing started when Johns Hopkins did this study, right, of the Providence Public Schools, and they said it was, you know, one of the worst performing schools. So you know what, I'd like to take a deep dive into that study, and I'd like to, and then I would like to see what, you know, Superintendent Infante Green has done. I actually brought her a letter tonight from May 28th about all the things she's added to the school, so I'd like to come up to speed on what that means exactly, and whether that, if she, she has said that things are better, and I want to figure out a way to assess that. I think we could meet together to look at policy in perhaps in other school systems or in Massachusetts even, because Mass is always excelling when we're failing, and I'd like to see what they're doing and how they're doing it right. And I think we could use our type for that, as well as to visit schools and talk to students and teachers.
Thank you.
I believe that the Providence School Board could be most helpful in this period before our return to local control by building on the things that we're already doing well and working a little bit harder on the things that we're not quite good at just yet. I think some of my colleagues and fellow members up here mentioned just being able to elevate the complex and diverse needs of our many stakeholders. That's something we do well on our Providence School Board right now. We welcome anyone and everyone for public comment, and we also try to interact with folks as best we can. And I think we also have to continue building collaborative relationships with city council, with the mayor's office, with PPSD, and with RIDE. I believe I bring some special experience to that. Before my time on the school board, I also served on the parent advisory council's leadership team, and I have served for over four years on the school building committee, which has helped open multiple brand-new or newly renovated schools. Thank you.
The third question, we'll start with Mr. Donahue and continue to loop. How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community, specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parent guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
That's a really good and tough question. I was at an event Saturday, QRD input event, and that was something that a lot of teachers were talking about too, is how do we get, how do we get to the parents, right? The key to getting to, frankly, The kids are easy to get to, frankly, they have to come to school mostly. But the parents are the tough ones to get. I know we have culture coordinators in some of the schools. We need to go out more and try to touch hands with people as much as possible. Some of the teachers were talking about some great ideas about, and this idea's been floated before, right? But opening the schools after hours, making them more accessible to people for other needs beyond just their children's education. There's definitely outreach we can do, a lot is going to have to go on, probably with principals, directly to teachers. It's going to need a plan, and it's more than I'm going to give you in one minute sitting here. But thank you.
Good evening, this is Jamel Clark again. I think that the Providence School Board could possibly stand to do a better job in taking direction from the Providence Public School District Administration, notwithstanding the superintendent, even other entities and input from city officials and state entities. I think that the school board could help foster a more productive and robust dialogue, not only within the school board itself, but also with other city agencies and educational reading-minded programs and institutions to create a more diverse and possibly even complex, though it doesn't have to be complicated, structure for debate when it comes to important initiatives that the school board could and should be willing to take a vote on. Thank you.
So in my career in public service as Bolzberger Attorney General and for a mayor, I've learned that you have to meet people where they are. And it goes beyond just having a public comment at the school board meetings. I would suggest having town hall meetings throughout the city that allow people to come, like a night like tonight, have people come, have their questions, have their comments, have that interaction. But also potentially putting the school board on the road, kind of like what the courts do from time to time. Have a meeting at a different school in a different neighborhood. So it makes it easier for folks around the city to come and be heard and just to see what's going on. But also, we should be in the schools. If I'm appointed to the school board, I would make it a point to get into the schools, to talk to those teachers, to talk to the students, and hopefully talk to parents as well. Because that's the way you're going to do it. You have to talk to the people, you have to hear what's going on, because otherwise, what's the point? So, thank you very much.
Okay, so you, can you repeat the question?
Oh, sure. How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parent guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure I'm addressing correctly. Well, I, you know, I, yeah, I like the idea of these public forums. I think, I think it would be good to have like on the calendar, I mean, I'm not going to say anything original here, because what the other candidates have said is I think these public forums are very useful and, and it would, we could have, they could go from, go from school to school, they could be at one place. I mean, that would be, I think would be useful to have it in different parts of the city. Because then you could, people would be allowed to, you know, address their grievances, and we could be made more aware of the needs of each particular school.
Yes?
I think what the school board is doing now is, in addition to our meetings being public as is required, we also stream all of our meetings, and those are available to watch live or later. We've also at times relocated meetings to this very space when we know that there will be a lot of members of the public that are interested in the particular topics on our agenda. I think that flexibility is very important. I think we need to go to where the people are in the sense that as we shift to a hybrid model and each member is responsible for a particular region in the city. I think that there's opportunity for the members that represent each region to spend more time in that region, at those schools, at community events. I also think that a goal that we could consider is that now that the district has done so well increasing our services to our multilingual learners, I'd love to see the school board consider providing interpretation services at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto what Melissa said, and also, I think that there's this notion that people go where they, where they value, right? And I'd like to sort of flip that remix. It's, I think people show up where they are valued. And so I think that if the Providence School Board continues to vocal that they are valued in our space, which goes beyond us, right? That folks show up to public comment, and when their needs are not actually, when they feel that their needs are not being heard, that breaks down the trust, right? And I think that no matter where we have the meetings and folks are not actually feeling heard and valued, it doesn't matter where the meetings are, like folks aren't going to keep showing up in good faith. I do think there's room for us to get creative however though, and taken from artists and creatives. Like we could co-host meetings with different, like pop-ups, like we could have pop-ups at different schools, at different businesses, at youth programs, at churches. There is a way to meet people where they're at, but they have to be in creative ways that are in collaboration with the folks who are most impacted. And I think it really boils down to elect people and appoint people who, it's not a stretch to meet people where they're at, because we're there.
When I was teaching at Hope, the principal, Harry Potter, would have meetings at, live after work, and so parents came, students came. And, and I think that in other cases, we went to churches. Most neighborhoods now have neighborhood associations, and through that group, meetings could be held there, similar to what the city council members do. You know, I think that if you go to the neighborhoods and ask and give the impression that you care and you want them to be present, then you will have people who volunteer.
It's actually been in the area of my concern and why I put forth a resolution to rotate board meetings across the districts in the city. But I'd also like to, you know, bolster board member attendance, not only at the regular school board meetings, but at subcommittee level. And also maybe recommend holding office hours regularly at city hall or at the school sites. Also that, you know, the schools, the families and students have more accessibility to the board members. I've made it my personal mission to not only attend commencement ceremonies, but sporting events and board meetings. And I would recommend that for the board members to continue that visibility throughout the communities that they serve and also at large.
Thank you so much. I want to acknowledge that Councilman Shelley Peterson has joined us. And what we're going to do is, Representative Agello, I see as well, thank you for being here. It's not an obligation, but we're going to invite the members on stage, the applicants on stage to circulate a bit, and if folks have individual questions, they maybe are shy about a big public question, but want to talk to you, I would encourage you to hang around and take those questions. We're going to reset the tables. I know I had said earlier that we were going to wait till 6:30, but it's 5:45. So, and we're waiting on two of those applicants. So as soon as those two arrive, we'll get started with round two. That way, we're not excluding anyone, but we also can keep moving forward. So, thank you all again, and we will make an announcement when we're ready to reconvene. And welcome to the new members of the school board who've joined us. Thank you to Councilman Sanchez for joining us. For those of you who might not have been here earlier, we've split the evening into two halves. Because the appointment process has changed, I will now be making appointments based on region. And so, starting at 5 o'clock tonight, we heard from regions one and two. And now in the second half of the evening, we're going to be hearing from regions three, four, and five. In case you're wondering where that is, region three is wards six, seven, and 15. Region four is wards eight, nine, and 10. And region five is 11, 12, and 13. I've got a question during the interim period there, so maybe I should clarify for everyone. There will be one appointment per region. So for example, on the stage that you just saw, if you were here earlier, two people from that stage will ultimately get appointed. The school board nominating committee will make recommendations. For my consideration, I'll then interview their nominees and submit one name from each region up to the city council for their review. And Councilman Pacharo, who spoke earlier, mentioned, so I'll mention again, because he had to leave, that there will be another chance for community engagement, which is in the city council process. So after we put the names forward, there will be a council hearing, and that's another opportunity for members of the community to share their perspective. As a reminder, we have simultaneous translation available for attendees and for participants. I want to thank once again the members of our school board nominating committee, Amelda Benitez, Amelda DePina, and Tom Kerr Van Der Slies, who are seated down here in front of you. Give them a round of applause. They're volunteering their time with this process. And then, of course, another warm thanks to the legal women voters. Joan Redsinus, in just a second, will go through the rules and the procedure once again. And I would encourage everyone to please respect the time cards and the time limits. And we will get started here in just a second. Matt, are we good to go?
Good to go.
All right. So I'd like to welcome then Joan Redsinus to start us back up again with round two, regions three, four, and five.
Thank you, Mayor Smiley. Once again, the League is thrilled to be part of this nominating committee for League, strong League in democracy, and democracy depends upon a good public school system. So we're thrilled to have so many people from the public eager to contribute. Some ground rules. In the audience are two League members, Martha Fruchy and Helen Walsh, with three time cards. 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. Each question you will have one minute for. And so your bios are online, and please don't waste your minute saying how much you adore children. We know that. And we'll start, there are three questions. We'll begin with Ms. Ricardo, and we'll just start right now. Question one, briefly, what motivates you to serve on the Providence School Board? What schools and their experiences have prepared you to pursue this work? One minute, start.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jenny Mercado. What motivates me to be on the school board is because I believe that every parent and every student should be involved in our kids' education. My experience working with families, bringing them to the registration department and getting registered, have opened my eyes that we need to do better. Another motivation is because I want to see every student succeed, no matter what education, what school they go to. And I believe Providence could give us a better education, could do more for our families. And I love that we're now going to have multilingual programming that is going to open the eyes to all of our parents, because one of the reasons why they don't get involved is because we don't provide them with multilingual programming.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Melody Francisco. What motivates me are my past students. I used to be an ESL teacher at Gateway State, and my current clients, I am a social worker for the state of Rhode Island, DCYF. What motivates me are my clients that I see daily that struggle a lot of the time with a lot of the ins and outs of the Providence School District. And oftentimes feeling like they're not being heard or being what they need out of their school, their daily programming, not being really offered to them in a way that they can fully process and understand it. Sorry, y'all. And so my clients on a daily basis, I have approximately 25, 30 kids on my caseload, and a lot of them are Providence School colors. And I have to deal with them one-on-one and hear their complaints and hear their struggles. And so that's what motivates me on a daily. I think I bring a unique perspective to Providence schooling and students as a whole.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Naya Ismogazi. And as a junior at PCTA, a lot of things motivate me. I worked at Ariza PSU, both student organizations taught me so much. I've learned about injustice and how it affects our systems, how it affects PPSD, how me as a student and my voice matters. I think every day I go to school, every day I go to my free engineering, I go to school here at PCTA. So a lot of what's happening at the district affects me, obviously. So I, I definitely feel like it's really big in my life. I go through it every day, I live it, and I think there's nobody better than me to really show that experience.
Hello, my name is Steve Galloway, and welcome, everyone. I had a wonderful time in the Providence school system with my three boys. There were pitfalls, there were issues, but they made it through. And I know we like to sit around and talk about all the negative things about any organization, but I'm just here to say I have a happy story with my three boys. Today, my oldest graduated from the Met, he's an engineer. My middle child graduated from Classical, he now works for the Patriots. My youngest graduated from Classical, he's an Air Force man. So I had a happy time with all the parent teachers meeting, all the different aspects of it. And my job, my goal now is to make sure that I prepare the way so another family could maybe stand one day and say that they made it through with their kids as well.
My name is Nigel Eva Muendafo. I'm the president of the board at the Wifey Dream Center. I'm also the chair of helping awareness at the Providence Public Schools. During my term as a helping awareness chair, I prioritize students, I'm mental health, I work with the district to expand smart clinics in schools, opening up mental health clubs at PCTA, Central High School, and also Classical High School as well. I also work with the district to create a yearly mental health fair, which will engage 400 parents every year. And I'm applying again to the school board because I believe in the solution. And the solution is bilingual education. Look how this charter school is doing well in reading. The district started a bilingual program pilot at Lieutenant Elementary Schools. If you look at the data there, the attendance is increasing, the family is engaged, and the reading level is amazing. That's why I want, I want to bring solution, and that's bilingual education. I think that 50% of our school should be bilingual.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dave Townen. I'm a lifelong community volunteer activist for more than 50 years with our schools and with thousands of students who go to our schools. But there's only so much you can do as a volunteer other than just complain about everything. And I want to be on the school board, so I'll be in a position to actually do some constructive things to solve some of the problems in the schools. And I hope to have a chance tonight to tell some of the things I'd like to do to involve the community, reduce chronic absenteeism, represent all 6,000 school-aged students in my district, bring a school to Washington Park, and support the mayor in holding down spending, and suggesting some other ideas on how we can reduce spending even more than what he's proposed. Some of the volunteer activities I've been involved in is president of my neighborhood association, where we've adopted two schools. 50-year coach in a little league, where I've worked with thousands of school-aged children. On the school improvement team for several neighborhood schools in the area.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the time. Shall we go on to the next person?
Good evening, my name is Christian Lashapelle Miller. And what inspires me to run for school board is simply representation. I grew up in the foster care system most of my life, and I work now at DCYF in central management, and statistically, I should not be here. I've seen the positive impact that public school can have on the lives of our youth. I've seen the positive impact that public school can have on the lives of our youth. I want to be a part of that. And so that's why I'm here tonight, is because I think there needs to be that representation of that population of youth on the school board that oftentimes goes forgotten, unfortunately, in the system that we have. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Danielle Jones. What motivates me to be on the school board is my own children. I lived in Providence since 2004. I went to Johnston, Wales. And ever since then, there's always been a problem with Providence's education. When my kids were little, they weren't learning how to read in school. And how that feels as a parent, where you have to go to work and then your kids go to school, and you feel like you're failing them because you can't do anything about it. That's the reason why I'm here now, because I can't do something about it. And I have my hands as far as implementing best practices throughout, in our district from other districts. That's one of the main things that I would like to implement, along with Providence is sixty percent bilingual. There is no reason why all of the kids aren't learning English and Spanish as beginning learners. As an English-speaking person, I know that my child learns a lot more. She comes home speaking Spanish and English. We should do that for all the kids because the population is sixty percent Spanish-speaking. Thank you.
The reason, my name is Steve Williamson, by the way. I think it's a problem, so. The reason I feel inspired to join the school board is because I think education is absolutely essential to the life of the city, and I think it's absolutely essential to the lives of our citizens. I think that any great city needs to have a great educational system. And I think Providence is a great city. I don't see any reason why we can't provide a quality education for every student in our system and also eventually have the best schools in the country. My background is that I've worked as a community activist, and I've also served on the boards for a number of nonprofits. So I understand something about, you know, working committees and budgetary management. I also hold a PhD in political science, have top courses in public policy and politics, and I work as a policy and programming person at the department.
Hello, my name is Sydney Manley. And I am very interested in helping the educational system here because I believe that everyone deserves a great education. I have worked in higher education for a little over fifteen years. I've also worked in corporate America for over fifteen years. I moved up here from the South, you hear my accent, and I graduated from a great public school. And I was a little surprised to see that there wasn't that much concern in the public school system here. And my mother was a high school teacher for over thirty years, so I had learned a lot from her. I am, you know, I live in this community, and I think that everybody deserves a great education. I think that there is a concerted effort to not educate certain people, and I want to help change that. Thank you.
My name is Martha Moore. And there are many reasons why I want to be on the school board. Two of the reasons are, one, because I have a direct impact with the curriculum of the school system. And secondly, I felt very sad for the students when the court battle was going on between the city and the district. And the reason I felt bad for the students because if you force, I know there is this Crowley Act where that even if the state takes control of the school district, that the city has to pay a certain amount of money towards the district. But forcing the city to pay more than the city could pay just put me in that frame of mind that these students will still suffer because you're asking the city to pay more, which we all know how rent and mortgages are so high right now. That would impact those students in that way because...
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Juan.
My name is Juan.
Yo vengo de Bolivia.
I come from Bolivia.
En mi país he ocupado algunos cargos.
In my country, I had different jobs.
Como presidente de instancias que representaban a los estudiantes.
As the president of a body that represented different students.
A niveles locales, estatal.
At the local level and the state level.
Regional.
And the regional.
National.
And at national.
Y delegaciones a nivel internacional.
And we did international delegations.
Tenemos siete años de experiencia trabajando entre tres países, que son Bolivia, Estados Unidos, y Canadá.
I have seven years of experience working between three different countries, Bolivia, United States, and Canada.
Liderazgo, trabajo en equipo, intentos de comunicación asertiva.
I've worked in leadership, team building, and active communication.
Pero principalmente fuera de los cargos de motivos por el que quiero, me siento motivado.
But more than anything, the main reason that I'm motivated.
Es porque soy un estudiante.
It's because I'm a student.
Es porque diariamente soy testigo.
It's because daily I'm a witness.
De los problemas que enfrentamos.
To the problems that we have to face.
Los problemas con las políticas multilingüísticas.
The problems with the multilingual policies.
Las deficiencias en los sistemas y en los programas psicológicos.
The inadequacies in the system and the psychological programs.
De la currícula educativa.
In the educational curriculum.
A veces los estudiantes.
Sometimes the students.
Nos mostramos reacios a poder aprender.
We have to become agile in our learning.
Pero es porque no nos sentimos escuchados.
But it's because we don't feel heard.
Porque sentimos que nuestras voces no valen y no son tomadas en cuenta.
We feel like our voices are not being valued, and they're not even being considered.
Y el motivo por el que estoy aquí postulando un cargo.
So the reason why I'm running?
Es no por el cargo.
It's not because of the position.
Sino por las oportunidades que nos brinda.
It's because of the opportunities that it gives me.
Thank you. Second question, we're going to, second question, we're going to begin with Mr. Galloway and circle down, so it's not the same people answering in the same order. Question two: How may the school board serve and be most impactful in this time before the district returns from state to municipal control?
Well, I do believe that we should govern our schools and have our schools. We should not have had them taken away in the first place. But now we have to ask ourselves, now why were they taken away? And if those things aren't fixed, then we're going to have the same problems when we do get them back. So now that we are waiting for the moment where we do have control again, we have to set up our plan in place that we are prepared not to repeat why they were taken in the first place. So we do, my background is a compliance officer. I manage risk, I manage issues, and I resolve issues and make sure there's none to come. And I would definitely be a part of making sure that all the reasons why the schools were, had to be governed by the state does not resurface.
I've been on the board for three years, I've seen the failure of the state takeover. For example, the graduation application, I suppose, involved the FBI, the DOJ, to a point where the district had to close the program. I think that we, as a board, we need to unify. The way to do it is to have more retreats, meaning as a board, make decisions together, rather than going out publicly. I recently held a community member meetings last week about the future of giving school assistance to parents. I think that if I get appointed, I'm going to advocate for the board to create a committee on returning to local control, where we can involve the district president, the Brown University president, U R I president, even go further, involve students, parents. I mean, that's how we make sure everybody, even ours, have the voices in child education.
With the state takeover of the schools, the most important function the school board members have right now is advisory. And I'm in a unique position, and I was actually on Commissioner Infante Green's design team that helped plan the state takeover. So I actually had a chance to work closely together with her. And I think I'm one of only two of the applicants tonight that have been in that position, where they have actually already worked together with Commissioner Infante Green. And I think it's very important to have at least one member of this school board who has that experience working with her. And when I, if I get on the board, some of the things I want to advise her on is involving the parents and community and the schools, giving us a contract that gives the principals authority to run their own schools, reducing chronic absenteeism, bringing a school to Washington Park, and helping the mayor to hold down spending with the city and putting in neighborhood schools that will allow us to reduce spending while approving education at the same time.
I think at this time, it's important that we, and I'm going to echo some of the panelists here and prior to us, who call for unity, but also a sense of collaboration and togetherness in this work. At the end of the day, it's about our educators and about our students, most importantly. And so I think at this time, the climate that we're in, it's really important that we all get to the table and say, okay, let's learn from the past, let's plan for the future, and let's prevent this from happening again, specifically the takeover. But it's really important that we also give agency choice and voice to our young people and that we include the community and our youth voice in those processes and planning phases. So I really look forward to seeing what comes of this.
I would also reiterate what the rest of the panel had said, but I would also add that in the John Hopkins Report, there were issues that the city has yet to address. And I would think that the school board should focus on the issues that have not been touched yet since the report was started. That would be the best place to start. For example, school culture is one of the things that they said was broken. That's something that we have touched on, but I don't think we've touched it deep enough. And also, PPSD was overburdened with multiple overlapping sources of governance and bureaucracy. That's another thing that we haven't touched yet. So I do think that that would be the place to start.
I think the most important thing, pardon me, would be that the school board needs to demonstrate that it can govern and that we can do the job that's in front of us to facilitate the state return to local control. Because the Department of Education is not going to put the schools back in the hands of the school committee if they feel like we're not a competent functioning board. So I think that's the first thing that we need to do. The other thing I think the school, the school committee could do that would be incredibly important would be to go beyond the idea of school culture to address the educational culture of Providence and to make sure that we are, as a city, all behind the schools, right? That the schools are not left only to the people who have children in the school. We need to drive home the point that the school is, a good education is absolutely essential to the future of the city for everyone.
Yes, I believe that being part of the board is, one of the main things we need to focus on is making sure that students get the basics. I know there are different teaching methods for teaching students how to read. And I think we need to focus on the best effective methods for children to be able to read. I also think that it should be a collective effort between the school board and the community. I recently moved to this area. And when I say this area, I bought a condo just a few blocks from here. So I am invested in making this a good community. And I know that has a lot to do with the educational system. I used to be a little naive to believe that, you know, everybody had education as, that they were passionate about it and they were trying to do what was best. So I want to be one of those people. I also know we need to focus on social services because it's not just about the child coming to school. Sometimes it is about the environment that they are in. I also think that we need to, sorry.
Just to finish my thought, I was talking about raising taxes. The city might have to raise taxes if they have to pay all this money to the district. And the students will suffer. Okay, to go back, to go to this question that the moderator asked, we need to focus on the turnaround plan that the commissioner had brought in. We just need a collaborative effort. All the staff players need to get involved and keep those plans. I think out of the thirteen plans, there were seven or eight that the district felt that they could do. I think everybody, all the staff players, holders, need to get involved and try to make it a reality for the students that live in Providence.
Quisiera responder la pregunta concretamente y no la escuchar.
I'd like to answer the question correctly, but I wasn't able to hear it completely.
Okay, and since we're doing translations, let's make it two minutes to make it fair. How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community? No, how may the school board serve and be most impactful or helpful in this time before the district returns from state to municipal control?
Oh, okay. Yo creo que principalmente lo que hemos perdido ha sido la confianza.
I think mainly what we've lost has been confidence.
La confianza de un estado.
The confidence in state?
Que donde él controla nosotros como municipio, le puede admitir nuestras propias políticas.
The trust in the state and being able to trust us to implement our policies.
Pero la fórmula es simple.
But the formula is simple.
Una política que no responde a las necesidades del pueblo.
A policy that does not respond to the needs of the people.
Es una política inefectiva.
Is an ineffective policy.
Eso es lo que ha pasado.
That's what's happened.
Y eso es lo que nos ha llevado a perder la confianza.
That's what's led us to lose the trust.
A observar un índice de excesión estudiantil.
To see the high index of absenteeism.
De deficiencias educativas.
Of educational inefficiencies.
En diferentes aspectos.
In different aspects.
La clave está en trabajar.
The key isn't working.
Con políticas inclusivas y comunitarias.
With policies that are inclusive and community-focused.
Políticas intergeneracionales.
Intergenerational policies.
Que incluyan a la comunidad, a los padres, a los estudiantes, a los maestros.
That include the community, the parents, the students, the teachers.
No los sectores que piensan por el problema.
Not just the sectors that think about the problem.
Sino los sectores que lo viven.
But the sectors that actually live it.
Y creo que ahí está la clave.
And I believe the key is there.
Ese sector solo nosotros lo estamos en la escuela.
That sector is us, the ones that are at the school.
Ms. Mercado, we're going for a loop, babe.
I'm sorry. I was a question feeling, I missed the answer.
So the question is, how do we could serve better our community? I co-facilitated a program called Revasbos. And one of the things that has been successful in our program is that we have an inclusive and personal approach to every student in our program. So that's what we need to do. We need to bring parents, students, teachers, the city, the government, R I, the Green Fund, to come to our school board and let us know what's going on and get them, put the word of the people in our minds. I believe that the best practice should be everybody to collaborate together, to create a better community, a better student, and the best school for Providence because that's all we want. We want better education. My kids will go to high school next month, next year. So I want them to succeed. In order to succeed, I want to be there to make sure we have a better education for our students and for our parents.
Thank you.
I think that as a board, we have a unique position to echo a lot of what was already said. And I think the success in anything you do is talking to the people in which it is directly affecting. And so I think that the best way in order to continue to serve our community and make those changes that we are talking about here today is to talk to the students, talk to the teachers, talk to the parents, what's working for them, what's not working for them, what would they like to see, what they like to see changed. And in that matter, you will have more buy-in because you're now listening to exactly the people that is affecting firsthand instead of going through another, another... people that is affecting firsthand instead of going through another person. And so, I see it on a daily basis with our service plans. If I don't have that, the buy-in from parent or the client, we're not going to see any change. And so, it's important to value not only our students, our teachers, our parents, but also hear what they're saying and the way we value them is by taking that, taking what they're saying and putting it into effect.
Thank you.
I think that something that school board could really help with going forward is to kind of just, no, just to stop underestimating kids. I think between the students and the teachers and just the faculty and, you know, us as school board members, if we can have conversations and not be scared to really talk to the people that are actually going through this, that are living through this, and every time we make a decision, every time we make, you know, a statement, we affect those people. And coming from experience, I think that seeing and looking around the room and only seeing three people, three youths, including myself, in this room says a lot. You know, says a lot that me and Juan are up here talking about what's going on. I think that there should be way more kids on the school board. I think that we should be getting paid for our time. I think we should be doing a lot of things right now. I think that we should be getting credit. I think that my college should know about this. I think that whenever I go to a Brown College program, they should know about this.
Next. Next. Oh, no, let's start again with Mr. Williamson. Mr. Williamson, you begin, and we will loop around. Question three. How may the Providence School Board be accessible to the community, specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parents, guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
So, I think the first thing I would say, is this on? Here it is. I think the first thing I would say is that we can't wait for people to come to us. We have to be out in the community. We have to be engaging with people. We have to be showing people that they are valued. As somebody said in the first panel, so, I wasn't the first person to mention that tonight, just in the spirit of modesty. And I think that we need to recognize that there are tremendous resources in this city, culturally, linguistically, educationally, and that we are really missing an opportunity if we don't take advantage of that, if we don't use the richness of our community to enrich our educational system and our understanding of the world. Like, are we going to let people who have come from other parts of the world who have firsthand knowledge pass on to the next one without sharing that with us?
I think to make, or the school board needs to make things more accessible to people in the community. I think one way we can do that is involve the local universities and colleges. As I said earlier, I grew up in the South and I graduated from a very good public school. And one of the reasons, I believe, is because we had three universities in this small town, and a lot of the students in the college would come to the public schools and they would do student teaching, they would do volunteerism. I think we can do that as well. We have social, we have students who major in social work that can help out. We have students that are, you know, in education that can help out. This is why it just seems very frustrating that we are not involving the higher education here. I teach mostly freshmen, and so I see what we, I see the students that are coming from different areas, and I think we can help. Thank you.
I think we need to have forums such like this, like this one, where the school board will be the panelists, and you have parents, students asking questions to the school board. And also, the school board members need to go to the schools. You know, we have five regions in the city of Providence. So, we can have, we could have quarterly meetings, like, you know, the panelists be the school board, and we have parents and teachers out there asking questions. And then, again, the school board members need to make themselves available to their region, go to the schools, and, you know, imply something like, this is the auditorium of the school. You could have, you know, the students, maybe one of their three hours, come into the auditorium and ask the school board members question. So, that way, you have direct contact with the students and the school board members.
How do we guarantee that the voices of the community are heard? Is that the question?
How may the Providence School Board be more accessible to the community, specifically underrepresented partners, including students and parents, guardians, as well as educators who work directly with students?
I believe that there's two methodologies, the direct democracy and indirect. The direct one asks the directly affected sectors. Or we can have public meetings. But then, there's also democracy that's indirect. Right now, there are so many opportunities to be able to use indirect democracy to ask But what is missing to be able to apply the direct democracy is the predisposition. Even if we want to forget about the first part and go in the second one, the direct one. Then we can promote different laws that are being promoted. There are opportunities that, groups that represent the children. In the middle of different law projects, legal projects.
I think there's many strategies that we can implement to get more involved. I love that tonight we have a speaker person applying for our school board, because this is the representation that our Providence school faces right now. Sixty percent of our students and parents speak Spanish. So, there's a strategic that we could implement. It's creating, we could create public forums, and unfortunately, a lot of our parents would not come because they work at those hours. I'm one of those parents who works from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Unfortunately, I cannot go on those days that there are public meetings, but we could come up with something else, more ideas. Have more, everybody have say, meet them where they are. That's another way for us to convince with parents. So, I would like to start something new that we go to the school, we go to the, we even call them, we could call parents to find out how they're doing, what they need, but there's many things that we could do, and I'm happy that you're here.
I'd like to echo what everyone has said. I think that the way we help our community is exactly that, meeting them where they are. I think that's something that we can all agree on is that we value our time and we want our time to be respected. And so, I think the first thing would be probably, in my opinion, would be to kind of double up on events that are already happening in our community. Parent-teacher conferences, take that time and inform the parents, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we're doing, this is what we're planning to do. What do you think? If we have, if we're having like a basketball game, have somebody from the board be there. Hey, this is what we're thinking, this is what we want to do, what do you think? That is the key. Be where the parents are, be where the students are. You want to know how to impact our community, you got to talk to them. And so, a lot of our parents, a lot of our students are very busy. They work, they have multiple jobs, they have after-school activities, try to build up their resume. And so, we got to meet our parents, our community where they are.
I definitely agree. I think we definitely should meet people where they're at. I think with students specifically, I think we make so many borders for them to kind of pass through, it's kind of a shame. I think, especially me being a student, trying to go to school board meetings, I can see how I feel. How I feel is not wanted. I feel like my voice doesn't matter sometimes. I feel discouraged to even go in a room full of adults that make me feel kind of nervous. And I think the reason why that is is because we're not meant to be there usually, but I want to change that. I want kids to feel welcome. I want them to see, oh, wait, I know, I see her in the hallways every day. Wait, let me go to the school board meeting to see what she's talking about. I think school board members should be going to basketball games. I think they should be going to, you know, parent-teacher conferences. I think they should be in schools. Someone even said them going to, being on bathroom duty. I think they should be doing stuff like that. You should be in the community. You shouldn't be scared to be talking to kids. You shouldn't be scared to really getting involved with the community. It matters.
Access means that you have to be available. You have to put yourself in the community where the information can be gathered so that you can take that back to the board meeting.
Steve, I'm sorry. If you have a mic, could you turn it off while only one person is speaking? That might be the cause of feedback. Turn it off. Okay. Try to get a mic.
Testing. Access, the answer to access is to be available, to be available in the community. Although we are one Providence, all neighborhoods are not the same. So, as community members, as a board member, potential board member, my job is to collect data from my community and take back to the board, because that's our problems itself. There's no blanket meeting where it's going to take care of all the needs unless we all know what our community needs. It's important that we know who our principals are in our community, our schools. We can attend meetings at the schools, attend functions at the schools, and bring that data back to the board and discuss those pertinent issues. It's just being available, being out there, getting to know your community, getting the heartbeat of your community and finding out what your community needs, and then discussing that at the board meeting, because not all problems are the same.
I would create a community advisory board for, yeah, for parents, teachers, and students in Region Four. And also, the reality is, people in the Wafiji community, the Wafiji community, they work two to three jobs. So, we try to hold these meetings in the weekends as well. And also, work with the city and the school district to see what is, what we can do to make sure these parents have transportation. We offer them transportation services. I'm also advocating for us to expand valuable education because it seems that more parents are more engaged that way. Lastly, I'm very concerned about the new administration that's coming, Trump administration. We have two thousand Wafiji students and two thousand and documented students, and they're reaching out to me because the district hasn't offered any plans on how to help them. And we're going to see in January, in February, a lot of these families, they're going to take care, take the children out in the schools if we don't make sure they have a voice on the school.
Like Nate Jean, I would also hold community meetings for District Four. I want, in general, I want to make it easier for people to get involved. I want to require it from the principals to involve the community and make it one of the metrics that they're measured against, which is not currently the case. So, I want to force them to deal with groups like the Reservoir Triangle Neighborhood Association, which I'm the president of and has adopted two of our neighborhood schools. One of the ways I want to do this is by having neighborhood schools for those parents who want it, which I believe is about fifty percent of the nine thousand students that are currently being bused. I believe they would choose to go to a neighborhood school if they were given that opportunity. And what this would do is make it easier for the parents to get involved, because fifty percent of all the parents do not live walking distance, do not have access to a car during the day. If their child is being bused, there's no way on earth that they can get involved at all of their school. And the bonus of my idea is that besides, it would save ten million dollars a year, which I know the mayor would be interested in doing.
I don't know how we can make decisions without including the voices of those most impacted by those decisions, and yet surprisingly enough, it happens quite often, and not just the city level, but the state level, the federal level. And we don't always circle back to our communities to say, hey, how has this affected you? And what can you share with us about helping to inform our decision-making moving forward to make this system work for you? And so, I think it's really important that we, that we consider what does it look like to be in our communities. I think we're also tired and exhausted of hearing people say they're going to do things and then they don't follow through. That happens a lot. But I can say from experience at DCYF, when the new director came in, she made it her mission to go out into the community, speak with the providers, speak with the youth, speak with the family. She's not even from Rhode Island, but she said, I need to know what are their thoughts, what is going on in Rhode Island at DCYF, and how can I make this system better for everyone? So, that's what I'd like to do similarly on a school board.
I would like to reiterate everything that everyone said. As far as meeting people where they are, specifically, I would suggest, almost every school in Providence has parent-teacher organization. The school board should reach out to those parent-teacher organizations, ask them their questions. They're already meeting, you could just send them a letter and ask them, do you have, you know, suggestions for school board? That's one way. And also, I presented this at the PSU meeting, but governance should be included in the school curriculum so that there is student governance at each school so that they already have a voice to share with us. Those are my two suggestions.
We had more questions, we had more questions from the audience than we had time. We'll be here in two quarters. We had more questions from the audience than we had time, or we'll be here in two quarters. So, the nominated committee has selected two questions, and let's limit it to forty-five seconds, but I'll give you all a minute to think before I hit it. The first one is, given the recent tension between different stakeholders in the school system, namely, the district, RIDE, the city, and the teachers' union, how do you envision the board's relationship with each? So, take a minute to think of your thoughts, and then we'll have, each will have forty-five seconds if you answer, if you would like to answer. So, sure. Given the recent tension between the stakeholders in the Providence Public School District, namely, the district, RIDE, the city, and the Providence Teachers' Union, how do you envision the board's relationship with each? So, shall we start with Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I was just kind of saying, I don't really think that's rocket science or a hard question to answer. Yeah, we could probably think about it all night, not some of us, but I think it's just about communication and openness and a willing to understand and take into account other perspectives, whether it's officials, partners, providers, like whatever the case might be, we got to be able to come to the table. And at the end of the day, we have to remember that this isn't about us, this is about our kids, this is about our educators, and this is about Providence, public schools. That's what this is about. So, your tension, while I understand that it might be valid to the folks that are
that are, uh, holding some of that in, in their heart, uh, we have to, at the end of the day, come to a solution that benefits those that we serve.
Thank you. Next?
Um, so, I envision the, the role and the relationship of the school committee to the various stakeholders as an intermediary, but also as an advocate for a world-class educational system. I don't think, I think the amount of money that we spend on schools every year to the average, uh, taxpayer is eye-watering, right? Like, I think it's a huge number. Now, one group of people who we need to talk to are the taxpayers, the people who, and people who pay taxes but don't have children. And I think we can convince them to spend a lot of money every year on a great school system. I don't think we can convince them to spend a lot of money every year on failing school system.
Thank you. Next?
Um, yes, I think that, um, actually, this gentleman brought up a very good point. He talked about surveys and, and speaking to, uh, the different stakeholders to see what they want. Uh, I think that it's very important for us to open up the dialogue between the teachers' union and the district. Um, because everybody's voice matters just as long as we keep in mind that it is the student that we are trying to provide a service for. And we need to provide this service so that they can be healthy, uh, I'm sorry, healthy, happy adults, uh, who can bring back, uh, and help in their own community. It, it should be, uh, a circle of, of support. The more we support them, the more that they can come back and support their, their families and their community.
Thank you.
The bottom line is that we are the voices of the students in our community. If they're the voices of our students, we just have to listen to each side and see where we can find common ground. Where we can find common ground, we need to work on that. Make it work for the students because it's all about the students. It's not about our, ourselves. It's about the students. So, we have to be the adults and listen to one another and see where we can find common ground.
Thank you.
Yo creo que, bueno, estamos hablando de cómo monetizar y de regularizar las tensiones que ya han venido existiendo.
Oh, we're talking about how to deregulate the tensions that have existed.
Entonces prácticamente la parte de esta tensión ha sido también generada por el sector estudiantil, por el corte presupuestario que se intentó realizar.
Many of these has happened because of the budget cuts and the frustrations of the students and when they went through all these budgets that they were cut.
Entonces yo creo que esta política tuvo casi un efecto dominó en muchos sectores sociales dentro del ámbito educativo.
So I feel like this policy had a domino effect within different sectors that exist within the educational system.
Por fortuna no existió, no se dio.
Unfortunately.
Por fortuna.
Fortunately, it didn't happen. It didn't exist.
No, no se dio el corte presupuestario.
Oh, the budget cuts didn't continue?
No continuó, ajá. No continuó el corte presupuestario.
It did not continue.
Ajá, exactamente. Entonces yo creo que hay que mostrar a la comunidad la previsión para poder instablecer un diálogo comunitario.
So we have to find a way to establish those, that community dialogue.
Y creo que simplemente eso, la comunicación como lo mencionaba, tiene licenciado.
And I believe like the previous gentleman mentioned, it really boils down to the communication.
Yes, it does.
And that's it.
You guys could pass the mic down, please.
My, my answer would be that we have open communication, open collaboration, and more importantly, transparency. That way, we all know, we are working on the same page. We all know what's going on. But most importantly, communication is the key for everything. If we don't communicate with our students, with our parents, with our teachers, with our, with R I D, with the teachers' union, we won't go nowhere. So, open communication, collaboration, and transparency.
I agree with everybody that has heard it on before me. I think the, the way you get to know someone or the way you get to understand something is by communicating and having that open line of communication. So, I would say that only being a transparent in a, um, in a communication that's constantly been open, one that we go into without having our, our, our own thoughts about the topic already or our own, um, prejudices, gets what is going and presented in front of us. And that's the only way we are able to, to do, get work done is putting our differences aside. Tension or not, we got to remember who we serve and why we serve. We're serving our students and we're serving them because we see the need and we want what's best for them first.
Oh, I think it's funny to say that we all have like tension. I think even in elementary school, we learned that with tension, we should all come together. We are a community and we reflect the community as school board. And I think to say that our school system is, like, we're failing. I think to say that our school system is failing is not completely true. I think we're failing our school system. I think the kids were failing that, but I think we need to do better. So, I think that we need to have open communication. We need to stop having conflicts and, you know, this tension and sit down and have a community conversation because at the end of the day, we are a community. And at the end of the day, your neighbor is my neighbor. We are all in this together. If we don't all come together, we will, we'll resolve nothing. So, I think that's what we need to do. We all need to come together, kids and all.
I think all these stakeholders are going to come to the table with an agenda. And the agenda of the school board has to be the common voice in the middle of that storm. Uh, we cannot bend, we cannot twist in the wind. We have to, um, remember that the true, um, stakeholders are the children. And, uh, that is the only thing that should be on our mind is serving our children and the community, and not serving the agenda of any one of these stakeholders.
Uh, we have seen the example of, for Unilever, uh, for example, the mayor office, the city council, and as well, the school board as well. We all agree that the state takeover is the aim. Regarding the city funding, we have seen also the city stepping up on funding our schools if appointed and matterfully the compensation our state. Two years ago, the Rodan estate gave its grants to one hundred million to expand the bilingual education program. It's time for the state to fund our schools where also for us. I want for us to spend, for every school to have therapists. And that would not happen, we need money and help from the state.
Thank you.
As I previously mentioned, I'm one of the two candidates coming before you tonight who's actually worked with Commissioner Infante Green on a design team to plan the takeover. So I'm in a unique position where I could be a go-between between the mayor, the commissioner, and the school board. And I would like to have that opportunity. I've also mentioned I've been a member of several school improvement teams where I've worked together with teachers, students, and principals. And, uh, I've also had the opportunity to meet with the teachers' union leadership, uh, even though I knew they weren't going to support me because I approve of charter schools. But I will continue to meet with them if I'm on the school board and listen to what they have to say.
Okay. Second question. Again, I'll give you a minute to think of, all of you to ponder it. Often, the obstacle to improvement is the capacity needed at the district and school site level. How do you envision being able to, to work directly with and creatively with district and school level leaders to support capacity building? So take a minute and ponder, and then we'll start. Sure. It's about building capacity at the district and school level, school site. Often, the obstacle to improvement is the capacity needed at the district and school site level. How do you envision being able to work directly with district and school level leaders to support capacity building? So, please interpret in capacity building as you would like. Um, another twenty seconds to ponder. And then maybe we can start with Ms. Francisco. And again, it's forty-five seconds, so it's a direct pointed question. So.
The, the way I would like to, wow, sorry, y'all. Um, when I think of capacity, I think of like skills and knowledge. And so, um, in order to build on capacity or skills and knowledge, is being able to bring resources to be able to teach our admin or whatever subject we're talking about, um, what is needed to help our community and our students. May I go into them, ask them, hey, what do you think is lacking in your building with your students, with the relationships that you have? And how can we help in bringing the proper people to come train them or bring them the correct resources to be able to do so? In order to, uh, make our staff and students and teachers more capable to do their job and, um, be successful at what they do.
Thank you.
Could you just repeat it one more time?
Sure. Sure, it's about capacity building. Often, the obstacle to improvement is the capacity needed at the district and school site level. How do you envision being able to work directly with district and school level leaders to support capacity building? So.
Um, I envision it by definitely building a bridge between the schools and the district and also me being there. I think I have a really unique perspective, being a student and being at P C T A and being from a public school. Um, I've also went to North Providence. And I think with my perspective, I've seen how other districts are and how much better they are and how much equipped they are and how everyone else gets treated. And I think I'll be able to really bridge the gap between the students, youth voices, and also, you know, the school board. I think I'll be a great asset, not only to the school board, but also to my community.
Thank you.
Um, the answer is what do people want? Um, it's easy, it's easy to want to build something, but sometimes the answer is no. Uh, sometimes what people are asking for, what people are, um, endeavor to do, can't be done. And communication is key. Understanding what you want to do and what, what you want cannot happen in this moment or we need time, patience. So I think it's, it's understanding what does the district want? What does the school leaders want? And being able to explain to them whether it can or can't be done, um, in a, um, in a respectful manner.
Thank you.
I came to with the agreement, uh, you know, with the commissioner and also the school district. We all agreed that bilingual education is the way to go. That's why I'm really working hard to add to, if appointed, to work with the, uh, state senator and representative as well, lobby, to make sure they fund our school with the way they did the history in which they have brought resources, funds, to extend bilingual education and also the smart connects in our schools.
Okay, I interpreted capacity to mean having enough money to run the schools the way that they need to be. And I want to support the mayor's ideas on doing more with less as far as having the right amount of money. I support him in demanding an audit by an independent group to decide if there's excess personnel in the administration office, if all the contracts that we have are doing what they're supposed to do, whether, uh, we've hired too many people with the money that came from the federal government that was supposed to be temporary and, uh, hiring permanent people for that. So I want to support the mayor to all those ideas. And as I've already mentioned, I want to save ten million dollars a year by allowing the fifty percent of the students who don't want to be bused to stop being bused and go to neighborhood schools.
I can interpret capacity building in so many ways, especially in the context in which the question was asked. But I think when I think of capacity building, I think of the recruitment and retention of professional skilled staff. How can we keep our teachers? How can we keep our teachers, especially those who represent the communities that our students come from? So when I think of capacity building, I think it's really important that we look at that question and strategize around the ways in which we can, we can effectuate that type of change. I can go on and on, but I won't.
Thank you.
Um, for capacity building, uh, what I would suggest is, at the mayor's discussion on Saturday, um, I was in the Quality of Life group. And there was a man there who worked with children, um, I don't remember what program he came from. But what he brought to light was that the requisite program in the city for other companies to partner with the schools is very expensive. And there was a lot of red tape. It took his company, like, two years to get through it. I can't remember the name of the forum. I think it was like R Q or something. But I believe the school board should take a, a good look at that program to make it easier for local companies to partner with our school.
Thank you.
I just echo the, the comment that capacity building could mean, uh, any number of things. So I think the first thing at each individual school would be to figure out what kind of capacity is missing, right? It could be infrastructure. It could be, uh, retaining qualified and, you know, talented teachers. It could be, um, you know, providing, uh, adequate nutrition in the school lunches. It could be any number of things, right? So, I think it really comes down to looking at each school on a case-by-case basis, determining what they need and figuring out how to supply that. And I think it's really just generally important that we take a holistic approach. We're looking at the whole school, we're looking at the whole student, we're looking at the whole educator, right? And figuring out what's not working.
Thank you.
So as far as, to speak to capacity building, um, yes, that is, that's a very broad phrase. But what I have learned, uh, in talking to all different boards, different committees, uh, at my school that I teach at, um, half of it, half of it is just showing up. Right, just showing up, whether it's voting, whether it's coming to these school board meetings, and, uh, listening to what is needed from the community. Uh, I also think that, uh, it is good to get different perspectives from different people. Uh, you have people who live in these communities, you have students who go to the schools, you have parents that are concerned with their level of, um, of teaching. And I also think we need to streamline processes to help, um, get, uh, businesses and other volunteers into the schools.
Thank you.
Like everyone said, capacity building could mean a whole lot, a whole lot of different things. But I see it as, um, well, right now, what I'm speaking about is the, uh, the staff. You, you look at the staff, maybe there has to be some inventory that needs to be taken where people can look at, that the school board can look at the record and see, uh, where there is waste or waste and allocate the funds to where they are needed the most. So, we need to be very strategic in our thinking process, how we make those decisions. So again, we have to look at the resources that we have and allocate them in the right places and get rid of the waste, if there is any waste.
La capacidad de nuestras políticas.
The capacity in our policies.
Actúa en función al presupuesto que tenemos.
And acts according to the budget that we have.
Y la forma de administración que se tiene con ello.
And the form of the administration that we have with it.
Es importante que consideremos las auditorías.
It's important that we consider, um, audits.
Para considerar a las personas que están haciendo el mal uso de los fondos que se entinan a nuestros estudiantes.
So we can identify the persons that they are not using the money as it, accordingly to what it was, um, destined for the students.
Pero además también realizar la fiscalización.
But furthermore, uh, work in the fiscal, um.
Fiscalization?
Yeah. Fiscal. I don't think, that's not an English word.
Work on the accounting.
Work on the accounting.
Yes, accounting.
Oh, yeah, no palabra.
De la, de los informes de gestión.
The, of the, eh, reports, the financial reports.
Para que la comunidad sepa.
So the community can understand and know.
Quién y de qué manera.
Who and how.
El dinero está siendo administrado.
The money is being administered.
Lo que necesitamos aquí es trampar. Lo que necesitamos aquí es transparencia.
What we need here is transparency.
A lo que nos hace falta, yo creo que la mayoría pedimos.
And I think that this is what we are lacking, and most of us, that's what we are asking.
Okay, building capacity, like everybody has here, it's a broad question. And there's so many things that we could do. But I believe that if we open the doors, building capacity is also bringing teachers from other countries that are here in the United States. So we need to be open to have another type of credit for those who are teachers in the state that could be at least teacher's assistant to help us facilitate classes when a teacher's out of school, a teacher is sick. So that's another way of building capacity, so that way we could have at least a teacher or assistant a teacher. But we have to be open and create a pathway where these teachers that are in their countries, they could teach here in the United States, off Providence.
Thank you. I think that the city is well-served, your enthusiasm, you're willing to come out a week before Christmas and give your time and energy. So let's give a hand of applause for all of you. And to the mayor, who has spurred more interest in this than the league has seen in 20 years.
You gentlemen, round of applause to Lee Orman Motors and to our school board nominating committee. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Applicants, I encourage you to say hello on your way out to folks who have stuck around tonight. Thank you for your time and interest. Thank you all for joining us. Again, the school board nominating commission will be making recommendations to my office in the days to come, and we will have nominees to the city council in January. So those are the next steps in this process. But thank you all very much.